I want to welcome everybody to the 2016 GRCC Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. My name is Frank Connor. I'm the president of the Faculty Association and a professor in the Psychology Department. This forum is cosponsored with the Faculty Association. Nick Antonakis is here from the Academic Governing Council, and Jose Garcia is here from our Student Alliance. So this is jointly cosponsored by the three organizations here on the -- at the college. Just a little bit about structure. I'm going to manage the structure of the day, keeping time, keeping things on track. Nick will be handling the questions to the candidates. I will be keeping time, and we're going, as I tell all of my students, I'm the official timekeeper. Not that, because you can go anywhere on campus and you are in a different time zone. So we have to have somebody in charge, and why not me? The way this is going to work is here in a moment, each candidate will have five minutes to provide a pre-set introduction to themselves. They're going to give a brief biographical statement, including their education, work history, community activities, a statement of their candidacy, including rationale for running for the board, and their philosophy of education, and then their perspective on the mission of Grand Rapids Community College. They will have five minutes each to do that. I have already to-
Do we have five minutes to answer all those three questions?
Yes, you do.
Oh, my.
You don't need five? We can -- so that's the-
Took turns. One did one of those, one did another one of those.
It is a group process. You can have to -- but you're each going to get five minutes to do whatever you want.
Oh, wow.
It can be a song and dance, it's whatever you want. If you don't take five minutes, that's perfectly fine, but I will be managing the time. Also, as a scientist who teaches research methodologies, does research, I let you know that I have already randomly assigned, for all of the questions, your order. I went to a randomization table and gave you little names and numbers, and so as to not -- also, as a psychologist, I know the idea of primacy and recency, and I don't want to privilege one person over the other, so we can -- we might even submit this for a peer-reviewed paper. Once they get through their introductions, then there is three set questions that all five of the candidates will receive. They were already made aware of, not the questions themselves, but the three categories from which they will come. They will have two minutes each from those, which I will also time. They will also be given a copy of those questions, as well as Nick reading them. Once again, they've been randomly assigned the order in which they can answer those questions, so as to not privilege one person over the other. So are the candidates prepared? Do you understand, or you just trust that I will lead you in some way that will make sense? It makes sense to me, so that's really all that matters. So the first person who's going to speak, who introduced himself, is Mr. Bream, and you have five minutes.
So it is an after-order after all. All right, so my name is Kenyatta Bream, and I am Senior Vice President, Executive Vice President at Cascade Engineering. I've been there for about 10 years. Originally, I came back to Grand Rapids. I practiced law at Miller Johnson for about six years, and then I became -- and then I became Senior Vice President at Cisco Foods, which is a Fortune 50 company. And so, a little bit about my academic background. I am a graduate of GRPS City High School back in 1988. You can do the math to figure out how old I am, 46. And after that, I went to Wabash College down in Indiana. I've got a few Wabash alumnus here. Thank you for coming to see me. After that, I went to University of Michigan for law school, and then I got my MBA for -- from Michigan State University. So people always ask me, "Who am I cheering for this weekend? Go Blue." So that's where I am with that. So at Cascade Engineering, we have a front-end, back-end model. So we've got executives that take care of sales, and we've got a support team that takes care of the departments that support the sales team. So for example, I'm responsible for HR, and IT, and marketing, and communication, and safety, and sustainability. So I have a lot of departments that support the front end. And I've been doing that for probably about nine years. Soon after I got there, I was promoted. So I've been excited to work at Cascade Engineering. Cascade Engineering is a great company. I'm sure some of you are familiar with them. We are a triple bottom-line company. So when I studied business, we were taught Friedman. And Friedman teaches everybody that the only purpose of a business is to maximize profits. In Cascade Engineering, we don't believe that. We believe in people, planet, and profit, and we look at all three of those criteria when we're having conversations about our business. So I've been excited to work there, I'm proud to work there, and I'm proud to be from Grand Rapids. So I'm going to now switch into, you know, why I want to work with the Community College. When I was much younger, I went to, as I said, I went to City High School, and the Community College was actually, it used to be right next door to -- back there, it was called the Junior College. And so I've always been, felt like I've been part of the college, I've been fascinated with what it's done, what it's doing. I have a lot of friends who started their careers at the Community College. I've taken classes there. I've taken biology, I've taken some photography. So I've taken some of the classes because I needed them for academic credit to graduate from Wabash. And other classes, I just took because I liked learning. I found it fascinating. I was excited about going to class and sharing those experiences with other people. And then, you know, I still got some pictures in my house from when I took my photography class at the Community College. I think that right now, we're in a war for talent, and I think the Community College is an excellent way for us to make sure that we have the next generations of leaders that we need. Talk about my philosophy of education. I think that, I used to think that everybody needed to go get a bachelor's degree, right? I preached that for a long time. But now, what I believe is that everybody needs probably some post-secondary certification. That can be a certification, it could be some other process, it could be an associate's degree, or it can be going on to get a bachelor's, a master's, a PhD, or whatever it is. And I think that the college provides a great opportunity for people to do that. I've often been fascinated by why people are at the Community College. Some people want to stay in their home for financial reasons. Some people can't leave the community because of family reasons. Some people don't know what they want to do in life, and the Community College provides a great way for you to figure out what you want to do. I was at church this weekend, and students from the Community College happened to be there, and one of the persons says that, "You know what? I always thought I wanted to do business." And so I took some classes at the Community College, and I was able to take numerous classes at the Community College, and decided that I don't want to do business, I want to do journalism, right? He said, "Had I been some --" that's my minister over there, he's looking. "I was at church, yeah." And what he was saying was that, "Had I gone to another school, I wouldn't have the opportunity to take all these different classes because I wanted to do them. I couldn't have afforded it." And so, I think that one of the purposes of colleges is to provide access. And access means, in part, financial access, so that everyone that wants to and has a desire to continue their education can do that. And moving on to, you know, the mission of the college, I talked about the mission, and I read the mission many years ago. I was impressed by it. You talk about open access, and wanting to learn, and increasing understanding. And I think that, as an academic institution, the college does a fine job of doing that, right? And I want to support that. As a trustee, I think my role is to work with faculty and administration, and with students, to make sure that we can meet the mission of the college. And I think that hopefully, that if I'm elected as a trustee, I will be able to do that effectively. So I'm excited about the opportunity. It's another way for me to give back to the community. That's my five minutes. I'll just close up with this. You know, I've done, I do a lot of things in the community, so I do have my work life, I have a professional life. I've been very successful in my professional life and my work life in the community, whether it's Boy Scouts, or whether it's the Gрам, or Meyer Gardens. I think that a person needs to contribute to his community and make sure they're always giving back. It's another way for me to give back. Thank you.
You are almost in order. I'm Kathleen Brinesma, hi. I grew up on the other side of Lake Michigan in Madison, Wisconsin, which is a city that's roughly the same population as Grand Rapids, Wyoming, and Kentwood put together. I went to Providence College and got my BA in Political Science in 1992, so I graduated from high school the same year as Kenyatta, we're the same age. I did not know what I wanted to do after undergrad, so I went to work for two years after undergrad for the city of Boston. I was a Legislative Director on Elder Affairs. And then I went on to get my law degree at the University of Notre Dame in 1997. I'm married to Jim Brinesma. He is a West Michigan native. He grew up in Wayland, about 20 miles south of Grand Rapids. He is a lawyer as well. We both, we met when we were both practicing law in Chicago about 18 years ago. We moved here in 2004 with our two children. I am a lawyer, a mother, and a community volunteer, not necessarily in that order. I have two, Jim and I have two children. We have a 16-year-old sophomore at East Grand Rapids High School. We live in East Grand Rapids. We also have a seventh-grade daughter at Grand Rapids Public City Middle. And so I understand the value of the Community College, because I will be looking at colleges in a very short period of time. I'm also a lawyer. I've been representing businesses, manufacturers, credit unions, and banks for the past 19 years. I do some copyright and trademark work, but mostly litigation, so contract disputes. I also just finished a rotation doing recruiting with my law firm here in Grand Rapids. So I spent 2015 traveling around to area law schools and talking to law students about potentially coming to our firm. So I definitely understand the need for talent from both my clients and also from within my law firm. I'm also a community volunteer. I grew up with a very strong ethic of public service. My parents and my grandparents modeled public service with a high expectation that my two brothers and I would also engage in public service. So to that end, I have served as a court-appointed lawyer for low-income families. I currently advise women who, free of charge, who are looking to open their own business on corporate formation. I also serve on nonprofit, nonpartisan boards that address child abuse recovery, and also access to health care for low-income individuals. And I've always been a volunteer in both East Grand Rapids Public Schools and Grand Rapids Public Schools. I want to be a trustee and represent the community to this college, because I'm very passionate about the college. As a lawyer, I understand the need for talent and well-trained employees. As a mother, I understand the challenges that are faced by families that are looking at the next steps after high school. And as a community volunteer, I value greatly the investment that this institution and all of you who are part of this institution make in every student, regardless of their ZIP code or background. I think the college is a place where equal opportunity and good economics meet. Because barriers are lifted to full participation in our economic world and our democracy, it lifts all of us up. And the way it does that is because industry and business are provided with well-trained employees, individuals and families have the dignity of work, and then we get better participation, and everybody wins. I think the role of a trustee at a public community college like this is one of a trustee-owner, somebody who is not micromanaging the day-to-day operations, but rather is entrusting those operations and monitoring the president and the president's appointees to make sure they are manifesting the values of the institution in the day-to-day operations. I do like the ends that have been set by the Board of Trustees, is a series of pathways here. I think student success, retention, and pathways to transfer are the exact correct things that we should be looking at and focusing on right now at this institution. And I like the values of the college. I think that most big questions implicate one of the values that have been set for the college, and I think that the college, the Board of Trustees' job is to look at issues that come up and see which value is implicated, and whether it is being fully served. I hope that I can count on your vote. One more thing I would also like to talk about is my experience with various sectors in the community, civic, nonprofit, business. I have fresh contacts in the community in all of those areas, and I think that could benefit the college. Thank you.
Mr. Gucci, you are next. I scripted this because I have a tendency of rambling. So for four decades, I have been privileged to provide leadership in education. Some have suggested educational entrepreneur is a more accurate characterization of my journey since graduating from Grand Valley back in 1972. I chose education as a career because there is no other profession that has equal opportunity to shape the mind, spirit, and perspective of a child. I chose education because it's through education that neighborhoods stabilize, economies grow, and human needs get addressed. The person I am today has been influenced and shaped by the communities, individuals, and organizations who have allowed me into their space over these past 40 years. My professional journey began in a small Christian school that served the neighborhoods of East Garfield and Lawndale on the west side of Chicago. Four decades later, I was privileged to assemble a team whose passion was to come alongside of leaders in over 400 K-12 schools across North America. Leaders who were passionate about their mission and desirous of a clear understanding of what it might take to flourish in a future where the landscape was rapidly changing, yet feeling the weight of their own institutional inertia pulling on their future to look very similar to their past. In between these two stops, I served both suburban and urban schools. I was privileged to adjunct at Aquinas College here in Grand Rapids in their Business Department. And the consultant team I was honored to be part of allowed me into the space of large, complicated organizations who hungered for simplicity while experiencing unimaginable institutional stress. Looking back over my career, each chapter and each experience in so many ways was preparing me for the next chapter and the next experience. I sit here this afternoon at the front end of a wonderful next chapter, the chapter we call retirement. A chapter that allows me the opportunity to be fussy with how I use my time and where I hang my hat. After all, when one is willing to work for nothing, wonderful opportunities come their So I'm a non-paid CEO of Celebration Fellowship, an organization committed to planting churches in each of the state of Michigan's prisons, while partnering with other institutions who are equally interested in changing the culture in those state prisons. My wife and I are engaged in a jobs creation initiative for the Haiti Foundation Against Poverty in Port-au-Prince, Haiti, where a growing group of Haitian citizens repurpose scrap materials from North American furniture industries, and convert these scrap materials into high-quality products to a growing North American customer base. In my continued role as consultant, I'm privileged to come alongside of the leadership at Godfrey Lee Public Schools, a small district in Wyoming, Michigan, serving a financially impoverished Latino community. I'm the district's Leadership Design Coach, guiding a human-centered design process intended to energize hard-working staff, engage students, and increase student learning. I'm also privileged to sit on the Grand Rapids Christian, or the Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees. I sit with you because I'm passionate about working together as we give future shape to one of the most important assets in Kent County. I chose this place to hang my hat because this institution intentionally provides important conduit to personal fulfillment for a rich diversity of learners. From those who may have stumbled along the way and are looking for a chance, to highly successful learners who are looking for a quality, cost-effective solution to a four-year degree. I desire to continue to serve this college community because I believe that the key to our future will not be found in our history, nor will it be found in Lansing, nor will it be found in Washington, DC. The key to our future will be found in good governance. I'm eager to be part of a board whose commitment is to create systems where insight comes from multiple places throughout the college community. I want to continue to serve because I'm wanting this board to assume institutional nimbleness as we respond to new opportunities and confront new challenges. I look forward to today's conversation, and I'm humbled to be sitting in front of you today.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here today. I thank you all for coming and listening. Grand Rapids Community College, Grand Rapids Junior College, I've been involved for a long time. I care a lot about what the college is doing because I'm well-aware of the impact that it has on our community by helping all of the people in our community to live a better life and be part of it. I've lived in Grand Rapids when we've had tough times and 14% unemployment. I've lived here when we've had 4% unemployment. Four's more fun. Just no two ways about it. And the college makes a big difference. I now know that. I may not have known that in the beginning. When I went through school, Grand Rapids Public Schools, graduated from Creston High School, went to Michigan Tech, thinking I wanted to be an engineer. That was a year or two after the Sputnik went up. Everybody was supposed to be an engineer. Two years there, said, "Don't want to be an engineer," didn't know what they did when I went. Came back to learn more about life and what's going on. Where did I come to do that? Grand Rapids Junior College. It's been a year. So I've been a student here, and it helped tremendously. I then went on to transfer to Western Michigan University and found what I really wanted to do in education, and got my degree in education, and started teaching in Grand Rapids. My four children all went to Grand Rapids Junior College, Community College. I'm very proud and very happy with all of the things that the college offered to them. They all came and they all had a little different life. I won't bother you with all of the details and some starts and stops and things, but it was a great resource. After teaching, for a while here in town, I then entered a business, my family, my wife's family business, which I wanted to do as a vocational teacher, needed to learn more about the real world. So I've run a business. I've hired people. I've found other things for people to do that was a better fit for them, and understand about the bottom line, particularly of small businesses. Then I was fortunate to come to the college and began a teaching career here, but soon found myself in administration, and moved up in the Occupational Training Program, JCOT. Some of you may remember that. And it was a great experience and something that was very exciting, because we worked with people, we worked, I worked particularly with people that were economically and educationally disadvantaged. And it was, it was very meaningful to me to turn, help people turn their life around, offering a very different kind of educational experience than the traditional two years going to go on to the University of Michigan, even though my daughter had done that, but my sons, some of them, a little bit more of a non-traditional. So I was very excited to do that. After doing that and growing that program, I was asked to join the administration and be a senior administrator reporting directly to the president for what we called newly at that point, workforce development and economic development. Those were not terms that the college had dealt with before. And we didn't know exactly what that was, but it was my job to figure it out and make it work, and how can it help the college? Well, how can it help the college is by helping us fulfill our mission and our vision of helping people to have better lives. It helped to serve the community, because I went through with the college, the change from being a junior college, set up in 1914, as you all pretty, or probably know, as a transfer to the University of Michigan. The Community College movement came along, and it was to be much more. It was to serve the whole community. I'm very passionate about our community. I've lived here my whole life, my family has, and I know that the college can make a difference. So my campaign theme has been a better college equals a better community, and I think I can help. I think I can help by being that communicator. When we look at the job description of a Board of Trustees member, it's to be the link between the college and the public. I've been out there and I've done that. With my role here at the college, spent my time in the community. What is it that employers and the community needed? And then bring that back to the college, and what is it that the college can do, and communicate that back to the employers. I feel very strongly, the college belongs to the community. I'm an elected representative, I hope, to serve you and make sure that the community benefits greatly from what the college does. I'll tell you one more short story, just so you know my passion. Before I came to college, my dad worked here for almost 20 years. I got a very big place inside me for Grand Rapids Community College, and just welcome and hope that I could have the opportunity to now serve in this new role and make use of all the experiences and knowledge that I've gained over the years. Thank you.
I guess that leaves me. My name's Keith Wakefield. I also am a graduate of Grand Rapids Community College. Actually, I graduated from Grand Rapids Community College in 2014, which is kind of strange, because I first started here in 1967, so it was a little bit of a delay. But actually, I graduated from Central High School, right across the street here, in 1967, so you can do the math on that one. I went to JC from '67 to '69, and then I transferred, without getting my associate's degree, to Wayne State University in Detroit. And I remember that was a kind of a shock to everybody here at GRJC at the time. I remember my counselor at the time, I said, you know, "I want to transfer to a college." And she goes, "Well, what college do you want to transfer to?" And I said, "Wayne State University." And she went, "Where's that?" So I thought, because I mean, everybody who was here went to Western and Michigan State and Michigan. So she had to pull out a book and blow the dust off of it and find out where that was. So I did three years at Wayne State and graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Education, with the plan to be a teacher. But unfortunately, in 1972, teacher was not a great career to get into when they were laying everybody off and we were in the middle of a recession. I remember applying for jobs, and there would be 500 applicants for one position. It was a little intimidating. And I had student loans, amazing enough, we have student loans today, and I had them then, not to the level that they have them today, but still, to me, it was a lot of money. So what am I going to do? How am I going to pay these student loans off? So I looked around, looked around. The job situation in Grand Rapids was pretty bleak at the time. We were, that was right about the time of the first fuel crisis, the first gas shortage in 1973. So I saw an advertisement for the United States Coast Guard, and I said, "Gee, you know, maybe I'll look into that." So I went downtown, a little around the corner from the federal building, and there was this little recruiting office, and I walked in and talked to the guy, and he said, "Sure, we'll pay your debts, no problem." So I enlisted for four years. Well, 30 years later, I was still in the Coast Guard. I had a career up and down the East Coast. I was in Florida, I was in Michigan, New York, I was in London for three years, I was in New Jersey, Maryland, I did sea duty in the North Atlantic, search and rescue in Florida, all kinds of stuff. I started out as an enlisted guy, taking out the trash and washing windows, and I retired 30 years later as a chief warrant officer, telling other people, "Take out the trash and wash windows." Then I retired in 2003, and the Coast Guard made a very strange decision. They, I don't know what happened, but they offered me a job as a civilian doing the same job I was doing as in the military. So I became that famous thing you all hear about, the double-dipper. So I went to Baltimore, Maryland, and was a contracting officer for the Coast Guard for eight years. And I did ship repair, and, you know, bought all kinds of supplies and all kinds of things for like eight years. And then I retired, retired, in 2011, and moved back here, because my mother was here, and I'm an only child, so she was here, she's 88 years old now, and I'm basically the guy that goes to Meyer and picks up her raisin bread and yogurt and stuff. I'm currently, I do not have a day job, unfortunately. I guess it's nice to not have a job, as long as you have some money coming in, but I'm a member of the American Legion, I'm a member of the VFW over on the west side, I'm a member of AMVETS. Matter of fact, I'm the post- of AMVETS. Matter of fact, I'm the post commander at American Legion Post 154 in Wyoming, Michigan, which is on Byron Center just north of Porter, sort of in the Godfrey Lee area. We are a nonprofit that basically spends their money and their time trying to make things better for veterans. We spend a lot of money on the veterans home out north in Co-... So we're a service organization. I'm a service oriented kind of guy. I live in Wyoming, right down the street from the Legion. Educational philosophy, that's a very good question. What is my educational philosophy? I think I can sum it up by saying one thing. I liken it to be open to all. When I came here in 1967, was that my five minutes?
Well, it's surprising.
Oh, my gosh. I'm surprised. I have a lot more to say.
You can finish your thought. They did.
Okay, well, I'll be very brief. I'll be, I'll be very brief. Open to all is my, is my concern for education. What do I bring to the board? My diverse background. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a businessman. I've been, I've been all over the world. I've seen all kinds of things. I bring a whole different view to the board than everybody else. That's basically it.
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Antonakis. I'm the Visual Arts Department Head. And I will be asking the three prepared questions this afternoon that our candidates will address for two minutes each. And my partner here, Frank, will be telling us who is going to go first and the order. So here is the first question. Each candidate has just received the first question and they're looking at it. And if I could read it. You have been given a list of the college's values. Do you think these are sufficient to provide guidance for the college's work? And do they represent the will of the community we are here to serve? And as a reminder, the values of the college are excellence, diversity, responsiveness, innovation, accountability, sustainability, respect, and integrity.
You have two minutes and the first person is Mr. Frank.
So the question is, looking at this list, yes, I was supposed to move the mic closer to me. So looking at this list, do I think it's sufficient? So let's go down these. I think excellence is, is something that we should be very aware of. We should demand it from ourselves and from our students. When comparing the community college, we should not compare it to other colleges in Grand Rapids or other colleges in Michigan. We should compare it, compare it to other colleges in the world. I think that's the standard that we should have. And as I go through the rest of this list, I think they're all right on point. Diversity is a value that I think that, talk about our mission, the open access, diversity is going to be key to that. I think one of the major ones is accountability. So what are the standards that we have set for ourselves and are we meeting them? And as a trustee, it's my responsibility to understand what the key performance metrics are and ensure that we are meeting those. And if we're not meeting those, what is our plan to make sure they're, they're being met? So I sort of tied that, tie that with follow-up accountability. I think that we as an organization should make sure that we are doing what we said we're going to do. I think innovation sort of ties into, I'd put curiosity on this list, and then maybe you can tie innovation to that. I think as, as a student, as a community, we should want our students to be curious, right? We should want our students to understand what it is in the world. What problem are they trying to solve? So every, I should be able to walk through every community college student and say, what problem are you trying to solve? And have them be able to articulate what it is in the world they want to see. I don't ask people anymore what they want to do when they grow up. You know what? I ask people, what problem are you trying to solve? Right? And so what kind of impact are they having on, on the, on their community? And so I think that as a college, we should be providing future leaders for our community. And if we hit these criteria, I think we are able to effectively do that.
When I worked for Christian Schools International, I went on the website of all 450 schools that we served. Everyone said that they provided an excellent education. Went around the country and got into the belly of those schools, I found out that several of them were providing mediocre education. And so that word excellence is a, is a buzzword. And it's a word I think that needs to not only drive us, but I think we need to understand what is it that we mean by excellence. So to echo what Kenyatta said, to, to define what do we mean by benchmark? How do we, excellence, how do we benchmark that? How do we hold people accountable to that? Is this the maximum? Is this the right list for that? This certainly, these words certainly provide us with enough work to do as we move forward. So to suggest that we might want to replace a word with another word, I'm not in any position to do that right now. Responsiveness, when I think about responsiveness, I always ask the question, responsive to whom? When I interviewed for this position that I'm in, when I was appointed to this, I heard myself saying that maybe the largest community that we need to be accountable to is this year's crop of eighth grade graduating students. Aren't they the ones, quite frankly, that will be our students some four or five years from now? And, and so maybe we ought to think about what's our obligation to make sure that we're serving a body of students who are going to be with us in four years? Of course, that intersects with the business community. Of course, that intersects with core values. So is this word, is this list adequate? Yes, it is. Does this provide significant work for us? Yes, it does. But it's all around definition. How do we as a community define what we mean by each of these words? Can I use an extra 30 seconds on the next question?
You can take my 30 seconds. I'll give you my 30 seconds.
Thank you. I too have studied and reviewed the vision and mission and ends and means of the college. I'm proud to say that I was here working at the college when we changed over to this way of structuring ourselves, known lovingly as the Carver Model. But, and it's gone through some improvement and I can see that. And I think we're in pretty good shape. So looking at the values, I'm mostly in agreement. I offer just a couple of observations. In the area, I think excellence, diversity is certainly strong. It's my background. It's what I've done. I think responsiveness. And then in there, we say we anticipate. And I think the college needs to work very hard about anticipating the needs. Right now, we have a huge need in our community in the construction industry for workers and in several others. And you've read the paper and you've seen that. We're just a little behind the curve with what we're doing. The work that I did when I was here to go out and work with economic development folks, the Right Place Program that attracts new businesses, the funding for the Midwest Technology Development Center run from the Right Place Program that actually started here at the community college. I wrote the grant for that. We received the money, is to look ahead and try and be ready before the need is evident by saying there's this huge crush of vacant jobs and that businesses can't expand. Right now, if you talk to manufacturers, which I still do on a very regular basis, they have a hard time taking on new work, responding to orders. They have a hard time saying we can expand and be a more successful, better company because I don't know where I'm going to get the next set of workers. We need to work earlier in the curve. My background and experience while I was here at the college and what I've done before then, I think can be very helpful to that particular thing. And then I'll just say accountability. We need to really work on that. How well are we doing? Are we doing as well as we can? And use that, which I see going on at the college, to continue to, continuous improvement, I believe in very strongly.
Thank you. To answer the question, I do, I would answer yes to both of these questions. I do think they're sufficient to provide guidance for the college's work and the board's work. I also do think these values represent the will of the community. The two I would like to sort of pull out and talk about at more, in more detail are accountability and respect. I'll start with accountability. The funding sources for this institution come from two public sources. State aid from the education budget and also property tax revenue. And because of that, the third, third source of funding being obviously tuition and fees, accountability is really important to the Board of Trustees and the college because we're dealing with the public's money. And so I would highlight accountability. We need to be accountable to the entire college district. And that sort of dovetails into my comments on the value of respect. This is a very expansive community college district, and I know that because I have walked in nine parades in Cutlerville, Genesee, Granville, East Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids, Lowell. It's really important that we all respect whoever is at the table in every aspect of the college's operations, whether it's the Board of Trustees or any other part of the college. Respect all voices at the table. And so I do think that this board has worked well together. I would very much like to be a part of it. And I do think I would be able to do that. I think as a litigator, in business disputes, you always are up against, you often are up against another side that has a completely different perspective than you do on a set of facts and a set of laws. And you have to be able to listen carefully to their position and come to a consensus. And that's a very important skill for a trustee to have as well because this college district is so expansive.
Yes, I, I think the, all of these topics, excellence, diversity, responsiveness, innovation, accountability, sustainability, respect, integrity, all are, are great. I think they definitely provide a framework for the college. But the three that I really sort of focus on is diversity. The one thing I noticed when I was coming here to classes in 2013 was how diverse this place had become. When I was here in 1968, not so. I was very, very much taken and very, very pleased to see the number of people of color, the women, young women with, with kids who were worried about daycare issues. It was, it is a very, very diverse place. As far as responsiveness, I think we have to be responsive to our, our students and to the community. And one of the things I try to emphasize is outreach to some non-traditional student groups such as senior citizens, of which I am one, and veterans, of which I am one. These, a lot of these people are not even aware of what goes on down here. They have no idea what's offered at this community college. They don't appreciate the classes that are available. They were amazed when I told my friends that I was taking classes. The first question was, why are you doing that? You know? And it was, I told them, it was, it was open, it was opening, it was keeping my mind open. It was a great experience. And I really, I tried to sell it to them. We have senior citizen homes and assisted living places all over Grand Rapids. And I think it'd be great if the community college could do a roadshow to those places and say, hey, these are the things we can do for you people. And innovation, technology, I was absolutely overwhelmed by the increase in technology here at the community college. You know, all the classes being done online, all the, all the PowerPoint presentations, the little electronic, little remote control thing to take your tests on, everything. It was fantastic. I'm, I'm very impressed with it. So I think those are the three. Diversity, responsiveness, and community, and innovation.
Thank you, candidates. Now our candidates will be receiving the second question. And the question is, the college has three ends. These are student success pathways, workforce pathways, and transfer pathways. Do you believe these are appropriate outcomes for the college? And how would you evaluate those three ends in relationship to each other?
Well, I, I actually would say that transfer and workforce, workforce pathways are two of the ways students can succeed when they're here. I do think that student success is absolutely an essential ends of this institution. I think it's good that the college doesn't just take people's money and then have them be here and have that be it. I think the college has been doing a very good job and the data so far is promising on making sure once people are here, they know what's available to them. They know what their options are and that they follow a track that works for them specifically. I think that the college is uniquely equipped to work on workforce development for our entire region and even our state, and talent development. That's the workforce pathways. The School of Workforce Development obviously addresses that pathway. And then transfer pathways. I think that mostly the College of Arts and Sciences addresses that particular pathway. And these ends also hint at the beautiful breadth of students that this college serves. From the kids at East Grand Rapids where I live, we just sent 30 kids from the class, graduating class of 2016 to the college. Some of them are choosing transfer pathways. Some of them are choosing workforce pathways. Two kids who are the first in their, in their families to look for any post-secondary education and might be choosing one of those two pathways. So I do think these are appropriate outcomes. And I, I think that workforce and transfer are two that are, students, various students would define as succeeding.
I think these pathways, as they've been described, are fine. I think that there's room for a little bit of manipulation. I'm not sure that we should differentiate between what's called workforce development, workforce pathways, and transfer. Because I believe if we talk to the people that are talking about transferring, later on, they're still going to go to work. We provide a part of that preparation for them to go to work. And so I think that there's, we often talk about them, workforce development and transfer readiness. I think that they're more similar than they are different because that's what people need. I think we've got to look at it more from what the students' ends are and what they want. I've been a longtime proponent of asking students upfront when they comment on a continuous basis, on a continuous basis, what's your goal? And then to track our success to the extent that they've accomplished their goal. And even if that takes us a while, with the data gathering capabilities that are available to us these days, I think we ought to track that. I liken it to the business model. If I'm making parts for General Motors and I shift them to General Motors, that's not the end. That's only a part. I've got to be responsible for how well that part works 10 years from now. That Takata airbag needs to work and needs not to fail later on. And I need to be responsible for that. I think we ought to do that. There's certain parts of everybody's role, getting ready for work, that we ought to be focused on. And we ought to make sure that they know and learn because that's what employers are looking for. People want what employers are looking for so they can get a job. They don't want to get out there and be surprised and have the employer ask the question. Not, did you go to school? Not, did you get these grades? Not, did you spend time and money? Employers all ask the same question and expect that it is, what can you do for me as a business? That's what they want to know. And we need to help people prepare to have the good and right answer to that. And we need to be responsible for that. So I think it's all good, but maybe we can work and move them forward a little bit.
I, I think the most important one of these that strikes me is the student success
pathways. That's, that's the bottom line. That's the building block. That's the foundation. And I've seen my experience here and I've talked to students here. That's something that Grand Rapids Community College is doing a very good job at. They're very, very much in, in the kids' lives about how are we going to get you from point A to point B? What do you need, you know, let's check your math out. Let's, you know, they, they basically... It's, you know, they basically are very concerned about helping the kids or the, not just the kids, I shouldn't say kids, because I saw many, many, I saw many people in their 20s and 30s here. So, and a lot of them were, you know, they had not been very good students for many reasons in high school, and they're here, and suddenly they're faced with term papers and footnoting and powerpointing and all these things that they really don't know, and GRCC has been very good about doing that, helping them. And I think they feed those kids into the workforce pathways and the transfer pathways. I agree with CJ. I think basically those two kind of blend together. If you can do one, you can probably do the other one. So I think the basic building block is the student success pathways. I think we need to really concentrate on that and make sure that these young students or old students that are coming in here get the proper foundation. I know I was stunned when they started telling me I had to do papers in that MLA format. I had, "What? Zach?". So, you know, this is, you know, this is something I learned to do, and wasn't easy, but I learned it. So, we do, we do a great job with these young students, and I think you ought to be proud of what you're doing.
I don't know how to restart it.
Oh. Could have given me an extra.
The technology people in here can help Frank out.
Keith wanted to give me those 30 seconds, and you just delayed there.
That's it, 30 seconds, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say me? These three are the essence of the community college. These three ends give us intentionality. These three ends give us a particular focus. These three ends are not, however, three separate fogey. There's overlap with these three. So, of course, we would expect the person coming out of the welding program to appreciate the Grand Rapids Symphony. There's this overlap that we would have here. I think we need to recognize that. So, in essence, when I look at these three, these are the heartbeat of, of kind of who we are, and this, in fact, is the work of the community college. Student success pathways, and we could talk a little bit more about each of these, and what's the flavor, if you will, that would, that would come over those. And when I think of student success pathways, I think of something much broader than just content. What do we mean by student success in terms of its pathway there? And we can get into what else that might mean, but if you're asking me, are these adequate? Not only are these adequate, this is who we are.
I can wait if you need me to, so. And so I sort of put these in two different buckets, and I put the workforce pathways and the transfer pathways in one bucket, and I think the success, student success pathway sort of encompasses everything. So let me first talk about the workforce pathways. As a business individual, I work for Cascade Engineering, we're a manufacturer. We've got jobs right now that we can't fill, right? We also have a bubble of individuals currently in their 50s that are going to be retiring in the next 10 years, and right now, we don't have the workforce to replace them, right? So we're working with the college to make sure that we can be successful in the future, right? A business can't outperform its community, right? If that happens, the business won't survive. So we need to make sure we're continuously investing in our community, and the college is a way for business to invest in this community. This college can, will allow us as a business to be successful, right? So I think that's very, very important. I think that the community college is a jewel that's probably a little undervalued in this community. I think that a lot of people don't understand what having a college of this nature in Grand Rapids means, in Western Michigan, means to them, right? How it benefits them. I think that the community college helps downtown particularly and our community be vibrant, where we have students that are able to stay, continue their education. So I think that that workplace, the workplace, workforce pathways is going to be, is very important, and we need to make sure that pathway is clear, we need to make sure business understands what that is. And I know right now, I'm working with other businesses, and also other businesses are working with the college to make sure that we can move that forward. Transfer pathways is significant, too. I know a lot of people that started off at community colleges, community college, and now they're lawyers and engineers and doctors, right? So this is the first step to them, right? A buddy of mine is a lawyer, and he said, "When I was 18, no one would have guessed I would have been a lawyer", right? I know a person that, no one would have guessed he would have been a doctor, but his two years at community college allowed him that experience, right? To continue, to prove that he can do it, to go on to that, to that next level. And that's significant. Last thing, that when you look at the student success pathways, it almost ties with our mission here, you know, to, to have open access college that prepares individuals to meet their goals and be, contribute to our community, right? So this is what this means, that if you're at the community college, you are learning the tools to be successful so you can have a positive impact on our community.
And now we're ready for the third question. Please describe your understanding of policy governance and the role of a trustee in the daily activities of the college. Can you give an example of something a trustee cannot do under a policy governance model?
My understanding of the policy governance model is that the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees provides general oversight, general strategy, a sort of a, it's the, it's the overall strategy, strategic thought of the school. Where do we want to be in 10 years? Where do we want to be in 20 years? What's our long-term game plan? The hands-on, day-to-day affairs of running the various departments, running the various administrative functions, that's really not, in my view, the way I read the policy governance model, that's not really the Board of Trustees' job. The Board of Trustees is to be basically the strategy section, the strategy council. As far as what can, what a trustee shouldn't do, I would say a trustee shouldn't be interfering, for example, picking up the phone and calling the dean of students and complaining to the dean of students about something that he heard happened in Winchester Alley. I don't believe that would be appropriate. I think that the, the Board should allow the people that are hired to run the school, to run the college, to continue to run the college. I think that they should be, like I say, the planners of the overall, long-term strategy of, of the community college, not day-to-day, hands-on, nuts and bolts, turning the screws and making things work.
Think of the words "ends" and "means". Ends, what's the picture of beauty to look like down the road? Means, how do we get from point A to point B? It's the Board's responsibility to think about those ends. What is that picture of beauty 5, 10, 15 years from now? It's leadership's responsibility, it's administration's responsibility to figure out how we're going to get there. On one hand, it's not one or the other. You'll hear me talk about in terms of percentage of time spent on those matters. If this board is spending less than 80 to 85% of its time trying to create that picture of beauty, then this board is meddling in places where it doesn't, quote, "belong". Actually, this board is, in fact, not doing its job. So it's the role of the Board under policy governance to be at that 30,000-foot level, creating that, moving that rudder, if you will, of the organization, moving that ship. What are some areas where, what would be inappropriate for the Board to get involved in? I suppose we could give lots of, you know, specific examples. We, we don't, we're not supervising teachers, we're not in the, we're not, we're not picking up the phone, as Keith says, and, and encouraging or telling somebody how to respond in some way. We have an employee that we hold responsible for that, and that employee is called our president. So, policy governance, our job is to work alongside of this community and interface with this community, pull the genius from this community, and to create that picture of beauty for how this institution is going to look somewhere down the road.
My understanding, as I mentioned at the beginning, is that the Board in a policy governance institution does govern from a distance, sets the ends, as trustee Cucci just said, is forward-thinking, not backward-thinking, leaves the means to the ends to the president and the people that the president hires. Governing with excellence means speaking with one voice, that's a policy governance standard. And so, to give an example of something a trustee couldn't do under policy governance, I don't think a trustee could purport to speak for the Board as a whole. I don't think a trustee should speculate on how they think the Board is going to decide something that is upcoming on an agenda. I don't think that a trustee should or could unilaterally respond to a concern that comes from a member of the public. I think the trustee's job is to listen and empathize and then pass the person on to the president, have the president take it from there. So those are some examples off the top of my head of, of things that a trustee could not do under the policy governance model.
I think the, one of the responsibilities of a trustee is to act as a champion for the college. I think that we should provide inside advice and support on key decisions to the college. As a trustee, you want to make sure that the metrics or the KPIs, the key performance indicators, are clear and understood by everyone, and you're holding the administration responsible for that. I think we should understand the finances and making sure that the college is fiscally responsible, and we should provide input on strategy and on the college planning process. That being said, that means that we are part of helping create strategy, but the Board has nothing to do with the execution of strategy. That is in the administration's hand. It's their responsibility to make sure that we all have agreed upon plan and making sure that that's being executed effectively. As a Board, as a trustee member, that is something that's not in my scope of responsibility, and I should not, and I should not be commenting on that. Another thing I shouldn't do as a potentially future trustee is communicate on the behalf of the college, right? I shouldn't be out in the community. There will be some things I could talk about the college, like the college's mission, the college's on purpose, some of the goals for the college. But as far as talking about the strategy and the other specific things that the administration needs to do, that should be from the president, right? And I, I think it's my role and responsibility to support that president, but he or she should be the voice in the community on specific issues.
Certainly, there's lots to agree with what everybody has said. The job description in the college's information is that trustees serve as the link between the college and the public. We're a communicator in both directions, listening. Primary role is listening and then sharing information in both directions. So that means that Board members need to be very knowledgeable about what the college is doing, what the college is accomplishing, what its pathways, what its options, what its opportunities are. At the same time, it needs to be equally knowledgeable, or even maybe more so, about the community. What are the community's needs? What are the community's needs based on the needs of people from different backgrounds and different abilities and different situations, older, younger, what have you? And so we need to do that to know what it is we ought to be doing. We ought to be helping to make that happen by creating the policies. That's why it's policy governance. We govern by policy. We don't govern by doing, we don't govern, as has been said, by talking to an individual instructor or administrator or what have you. We govern by policy, saying, "Here's what needs to be accomplished." That needs to be done through the president, because one of our jobs is to evaluate the performance of the president. How well have things been accomplished that we've set out as goals, as ends for the college? And so we govern by policy. It's very interesting the way that the policies and the governance model are written. It talks about what, what things cannot be allowed to happen. So it talks about what the president cannot allow to happen as far as not being informed to the, to the Board about what's taking place. It talks to what the financial officer cannot, through the president, can't let happen, can't let us get in financial trouble. So it's policies about what needs to be accomplished, and towards the ends that's been described as a part of that. As been mentioned before, not appropriate for Board members to get individually involved in operation. The policy governance model came along and was adopted to get Boards out of the operation, because in some places, there was a lot of that going on, and that's not appropriate. It's not their job.
I don't know if, yes, there we are. So now we have come to the segment of our forum where we have open questions. We're inviting the audience to ask questions of our candidates. And the rules for this segment will be to stand up, state your name and position at the college or community member, ask a question to one or any of the candidates. Candidates, please limit your answers to no more than two minutes. Other candidates can respond as well. Thank you.
One other piece, if you would prefer to have your answer, or your question on a card and give it to me, then I will pass it on to Rick, to Nick, to Reed.
Well, that was easy.
Not quite.
Hello, my name is Amy Petullo, and I'm an adjunct professor here at the college. The Board has been considering the possibility of adding a subsidy for rapid bus ridership for students and possibly for faculty and staff as well. Could you say, any one of you who might be interested in it, how you think doing something like that might contribute to the goals that are part of the college?
How do you want us to respond, Frank? Just jump in? I've been at the, at the Board meetings all year and the work sessions, and I've heard the discussion about that. I guess in some ways, I think it's a good idea. I also think that there's realities that come with that, certainly that have been discussed about the cost of such a thing. I think if it's something that the faculty thinks is very important and can help figure out a way that the cost can be borne in a reasonable fashion, and that makes life better for the faculty, because driving and parking and doing things around here can be a challenge. So I think it's a reasonable request, I think it's a great suggestion, I think the Board ought to continue to work very hard to try and find a solution, working with the faculty, that's mutually agreeable.
I would agree with CJ. Grand Rapids just established a silver line here recently, and I think it would be great if we could partner with the city to use that more, make that thing viable. I lived out, I live out south in Wyoming, and it'd be great, you know, for people out there to come downtown. It's a lot easier than driving down here and parking, like CJ said. So if the Board can work it and make it financially happen, I'm all for it.
I'd like to address it, but I have, actually have a follow-up question. Is, is there a parking benefit of any kind that, that faculty and staff get here? Is there a parking benefit, so you can, is your parking covered?
Right, David Park. Oh, that's nice. Great students, right?
Okay. So it sounds like this, law firms, having worked in law firms in Chicago and here in Grand Rapids, we have this issue with our employees. You want your employees to be able to get to work, but then you also want your students to be able to get to classes. It's, it's important, public It's important, public transportation provides that function. Being an accessible place means not just people with lots and lots of resources can afford to come here, people can afford insurance, a vehicle and parking. So it would be something that I think the board should take a very close look at. I see the benefits to it.
So, as an employer, I think one of our responsibilities, and this is from my, what my employee had on, that as an employer, your job is to help break down barriers to employment. I think the college has a similar mission, help break down barriers to education. And so as an employer, we know that one of the many barriers for getting to work is obviously childcare issues and transportation. Those are probably the, some of the biggest two issues. And as an employer, when you want a qualified work staff, you might have to provide programs that allow them to get to work. Obviously, it's a win-win. It's a win in the case that the individual has employment that he or she can get to and then the employer gets a candidate that's at work every day because of whatever program that they've created, there's a variety of different types of programs. So putting the cost aside, conceptually, I think it's a great idea that if you can help break down a barrier that allows into people to get, in this case downtown, or to get right here and it gives them access to education, which helps us meet our mission, that long-term, these individuals are able to find better employment and better their lives because of this subsidies, whatever we're going to call it, I think it's well worth the investment. So we need to probably consider what that would look like.
Can I borrow anybody's time on this one, Frank? Still, I'll let me, I'd be happy to answer Amy's question because Amy's question could be one of, one of 100 questions that have a similar flavor and a similar feel to it. Part of the tensions of any organization is, how do you take all of these values that we have that suddenly come into conflict with each other and you put numbers around them? We hear, in an ideal world, we would love to be able to respond yes to all of them. In an ideal world, we love everything just to kind of be free to its users. It's not free to its users. So that question needs to be held in the context of, at what cost to whom? And as a board goes through its filters, it raises that question, an incredibly important value. We could state a case that adjuncts ought to be paid more than what they're getting paid. We could state a case that there ought to be fewer adjuncts. We could state a case there ought to be more adjuncts. We could state a case, and all these, all these values kind of come together. So your question, your question is an incredibly valuable and incredibly important question because it's everyone's question and it's the question of how do we operate a fair organization and hold ourselves true to our mission? And we need to answer 100 individual questions as, when we come to what is the collective kind of corporate response to that? So yes, the board needs to wrestle with that along with all of these other questions around cost containment and quality program and how do we value employees? So thanks for asking the question and that's the work of the board. The work of the board is, how do we thoughtfully navigate our way through a response to all of those questions?
My name is Saeed Nakvi. I'm a migrant from India, US citizen, 53 years. I have twofold questions. You, the Board of Trustees, are the change agent for the community, for the student, for the taxpayers, including me. Okay? Two things. The governance books need to be looked at every month, every year. An example, I just found out there's no term limit for the Board of Trustees. It is not a dynasty, it is not a kingdom. You do not inherit for lifetime once you get elected. There has to be a term limit. Two, why in the world we are stuck downtown Grand Rapids for this community college? Progressive community colleges are in the suburb. Example, Missouri. Example, Oregon. Example, Texas. Our students have heck of a time parking on your campus. We do not have a public transportation in this Kent County. Therefore, they have to drive. This hill here, they complained, police department issues tickets, the students go bankrupt. Where do you see this college is still staying downtown? What benefit do you get from keeping the buildings downtown? You cannot expand. You always are raising tax dollars to patch up. Organizationally, you are top-heavy in terms of student and faculty administrative ratios. Those are my concern as a taxpayer, please. You are not the top 12 community college in the nation. Those are your challenges. Thank you.
Who would like to address the question first?
I can start off. Can't be hard, you can't be afraid of hard questions. So the first thing is that these are six years' terms. I will not be running again. So I'll be in my 50s when I, if elected, and I want to get ahead of myself, if elected. I think six years is a great commitment for me, but there are people who've committed their lives to this college and they've run for multiple terms and they've done a great job. So the fact that you've been elected more than one time, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I will not be more likely running more than once. I want to retire. That's my goal in life and enjoy time with my wife and kids. I think everybody talked about their wife and kids but me. I do have a wife and children. The second part of this question, I'm not exactly sure that, I'm not sure I agree with you, first of all. I think that the location of the college itself doesn't add to its quality. I went to school downtown. I went to school and actually it was a great experience for me, being able to go downtown. A lot of kids in Grand Rapids don't live too far from downtown, getting on a bus. So getting on a bus and going to school with me is not problematic. I think that the bigger issue is that, you know, is there access for everyone? So if the question is, there are people who live in the county that are further from, you know, I live on the southeast side of town by Breton Village, who are further than that and can't get on a bus, that's an issue that we should address. We should figure out how to make sure that every kid in this, every young adult in this community can get to the college. We need to address that. But I don't think moving to college is going to be the answer because then you have the same issue going the other way. Right? So you're saying, hey, I can't get all the way out to Rockford, I can't get all the way out to Granville. The same issue goes both ways. So we need to understand, if there is a barrier to education, let's address what that barrier is. Let's figure out how to make sure that everyone has equal access to the community college.
The most common question I've been asked over the last 12 months since I've been on this board is, why in the world do you want to do that? You put your own money in the pocket, you get no money. Oh, by the way, full disclosure, you do get a parking pass so you don't have to pay for parking at meetings. There's nobody up on this table here that's doing this because they have a personal agenda. And to suggest that years of service is a detriment to an institution is simply a blanket statement that is not correct. We have men and women who've served on this board for a long time and they have added value and if they were willing to serve again, I'd be willing to give up my place so that they could serve again because of how much value they add to the board. The issue of location, I'll echo what Kenyatta said. Again, we're back to all these values that kind of come into conflict with each other. Why do we call ourselves Grand Rapids Community College? Why aren't we Kent County Community College? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. What I do know the answer to is, there are a number of students who come out of the Grand Rapids Public Schools who would have incredible difficulty getting transported anywhere other than here that we provide a service for. And I'm willing to problem solve, how can we get the kids from Rockford and Lowell and Sparta onto this campus? I'm happy to problem solve around that before a move to suggest that we relocate this campus from downtown Grand Rapids to somebody, some other place.
I would say with regard to term limits, I think we have inherent term limits in our electoral process. If any elected official is not doing a good job, an unsatisfactory job, they will be up again for election. I think that's a term limit. And I would be fearful to look at the price tag, actually, of moving a campus out into a suburban area. The hospitals that have gone outward from the city onto M6, the price tag was huge. And the people in our district have shown they're not in the mood for a millage at this moment. So moving out to the suburbs would be costly. That would be just one more thing that I would add to that.
When I was here working at the college, I was here during the time that we changed from Grand Rapids Junior College to Grand Rapids Community College and expanded the service area, the tax base area of the college. And we struggled long and hard with the issue of location. And as been mentioned, there's problems of people getting from someplace to downtown, there's problems of people getting from downtown to some outlying area. I don't think there's an easy answer. There wasn't then, there isn't now. I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned, and that is the increasing or the great amount of work that's going on to take education to the students, particularly in the form of the middle college program or classes on in high school locations. And that seems to be growing. It seems to be meeting with very good response. That helps. It isn't going to solve every problem. Parking's been the number one problem at this college since my dad came here, way back when, in 1957, when there was little gravel lots on the corner and everybody parked on lawns and what have you. So it's been a long time problem and it's difficult, but we've got to work through it. But I don't think that moving the college, I think we need to do more about taking the college to the students than thinking about bringing the students to the college wherever it's located. So I think the distance education that's going on, the new opportunities that technology provides us, I think working with the transportation system, with the bus company, there's been a lot of that that's going on. How can we continue to improve it? But as has been said, moving the college is a very difficult and expensive situation. I'll respond too, because I don't think anybody else has. You said we're a very top-heavy organization. Having been involved with this college for some time, I would disagree with that. I've worked at this college for a long time. I worked at the Michigan Community College Association for a number of years. I've worked in Washington DC and take nationally a look at colleges. This college is not top-heavy. It has enough to function, but it's not top-heavy. You've got to have people to do work to, for the college to operate and be successful.
Thank you.
My name is Bernie Matker and I teach Spanish here full-time. All of you have talked about your community involvement and so forth. And this question has to, well, what would carry more weight as far as your decision-making, the needs of the community college and the professionals here, or the needs of the community when it comes to making a decision about the community or about the college and the direction the college should go?
Well, that's difficult, the way you framed the question, but I understand that you do. I'm not sure that they're at opposition or that they're pulling to each other. I mean...
The issue of park, are they, bus? I ride the bus. And I come from, well, I come from 60th Street. So, but I ride the bus and it's not that I need the subsidy, but there are an awful lot of students who can't make it in. And one of the needs of the community, as expressed by the downtown area businesses and the Downtown Authority and so forth, is that we would like to have less traffic down here, fewer cars coming into the downtown area. That's a little bit at odds with what the community, the college wants. Right? Because we're looking at other factors.
There's some realities in life and what the college wants is to serve students in the best possible way that it can. And figuring out ways to get them here is something that we need to continue to work very hard at so that it's not a detriment to anybody coming here to the greatest extent possible.
Well, and I didn't mean to distract from the question, but the question is, in decision-making, is the community more important or valuable or do we listen to the professionals and the faculty and the administration here?
I would venture to say, my feeling is, we're here for the community. I would, if we had to make a decision, is something going to benefit our staff or is it going to benefit the community? You know, we are community college, we're here for the community. Without the community, what are we here for? You know? I would sign, I think I would probably, I mean, of course, we've got to take into consideration all of the realities of the money situation and the unions and all that. You know, there's a whole lot of stuff to be considered. But I think the community is why we're here.
I think professors often ask difficult questions on purpose and so, and there's no right answer to this, so I'm sure your classes are very difficult, Mr. Matker.
Very good.
But I think that part of this is about compromise. And in every compromise, some people give and other people give to get to where you need to be. And if you pose a question where there's opposite ends and no compromise, you put yourself in a no-win situation. So I would try to look at that and say, hey, our goal is to, I mean, we're obviously a community college, but our goal is to provide access to students. And you have to look at the scenario and pick out hopefully the best parts of each scenario. So let's want a situation where, you know, if no one's perfectly happy, you can have a compromise and then everybody can hopefully move closer and come up with a solution that works.
I was, I'm sorry, Catherine, go ahead.
I'm just going to add to that, that sometimes there are model Congress situations in schools that was like a model Board of Trustees question. Because that, I think, is one of the biggest questions in whatever issue comes across the desk of the Board of Trustees. And that is, how do we balance the needs of the community with the needs of the people being served, specifically being served by the college? I would just say that I don't know that in, you can never say one of those two things should take precedence without a set of circumstances before you. But it's a nice little test, it is like Kenyatta said, a nice test question for the people sitting here.
Yeah, I was going to say, every question has a context. Without knowing the context, it's pretty difficult to answer a question with some level of helpfulness. As you were asking the question, I sensed this paradigm that we have two subsets of folk here. We have those who are in the community and those who are not in the community. Those that are not in the community, we call staff, and those that are in the community, we call somebody else. And I'm thinking that the paradigm is, we all really are, all are part of the community. And so, just in terms of a paradigm, the language that we use, aren't we all kind of part of the community? So maybe, maybe you want to test us even further by being even more specific behind, so what's the story behind the story? And use that as a case study for us to respond to.
Excuse me, I parked down the street, I was speeding by one hour and I needed to go.
That was an easy question.
That was an easy question.
You can go.
I thought we already covered parking. Anyway, I'm Leo Takarsky. I'm vice president for the campus LGBTQ+ organization Stand Out. My question is related to trustee Stewart's comments last month, which obviously became something of a thing. I'm not interested in starting that fight again. I mean, you only have two minutes to respond in any case. But I would like to know what your plans are for upholding not only the Title IX obligations as regards to trans students, but the goal of diversity that has been established as a core value of this institution. a core value of this institution.
I totally support the Title IX, as it's in place and as it's being practiced and as this college has adopted it, to serve all people. I've done a great deal of research and talked to some of the members of your organization with regards to the LGBT queer issue, and we need to learn from that. We need to talk, we need to listen, probably more than talk, to what is it we could do that would make all students, any students, students that have an issue, more comfortable and feel more welcome? And we need to change. It's a changing society. Things are different than they were some time ago. So past practices no longer help us. We need to listen and do that. And as the kind of examples that we heard, and as I've seen at other schools that have adopted and practiced, and the reading and research that I've done between that, happened to know Trustee Stewart quite well, he lives across the street from me, so we've had some good conversations before, not to say that I agree with what, some of the things that he had to say. But I think we need to be very accommodating and meet the needs of all students in any and every way possible. Now, there are things that are being done. I was pleased at a work session a while ago to hear from our Chief Financial Officer about all of the things that have been done at the college that help. It's a beginning. It's not enough, but it's very expensive to make physical things. Now, to make other kinds of changes and refer to students in the way that they wish to be referred to, and names and those kinds of things, those are pretty simple and straightforward, and it seems like we ought to get at that pretty quick.
Thank you for the question. I would support, actually, I echo a lot of things that I've just heard. I would support the college's policy, and I'd even go further than that. I would support changes to Elliot Larson. So you've got federal laws, and you've got state laws, and so the state law in Michigan is called Elliot Larsoned, and a lot of classifications are protected. Orientation is not at this point in time, but I believe in the future that there will be a change to that, and Elliot Larson will provide protections for orientation, and I would actually support that change.
Leo, you need to be treated with the same level of respect and dignity that every person in this room is. So I, as a trustee, as I listened to staff describe their journey at trying to increase the level of safety and respect that every student felt on this campus, I found myself impressed with the level of sensitivity behind that. There still may be areas of significant insensitivity, and if there are, we'll find out what those areas of insensitivity are. But this is a college that, it's a college, it's a college where we have an obligation to each other to make sure that all of us are dignified and respected, and we'll create policies that will support that.
The only thing I would add is, I think that the board meeting and the board retreat where all of the voices were heard on this issue were very productive, from what I've read about them. I was not present at them. Everyone on a campus deserves to feel safe and respected, all of the students, and also the trustees who have concerns about policies like this. I think it was a very productive moment for the college. One thing I will point out is that the particular LGBT policies that were at issue at the October Board Meeting, it's my understanding they were not put in place in response to any action under Title IX, but that they were put into place a good number of months ago. And I think it's an example of what a humane and forward-thinking institution this is.
I would agree. I think this is a very welcoming, diverse organization. I'm 100% in favor of equal opportunity under the law for everybody, whatever their gender, nationality, religion, anything. I think we have to be open, and we can't close people out because they may be a little different than we're used to seeing in our neighborhoods. I think Grand Rapids Community College does a great job, and has done a great job over the past on opening opportunity for people of all nationalities and sexual orientations and beliefs. So I support it 100%.
We're ready for another question?
I think the statistics, there were a lot talked about barriers. I wanted to talk about student parents for a moment. I think it's one in five or one in four college, community college students across the country are a parent. Can you talk a little bit about what opportunities you see the college to play in an arena of two-generation strategy? So supporting perhaps a student parent, but also supporting and ensuring the growth of their child or children, so that we can have better outcomes in terms of retention and graduation rate? So if you could speak about any ideas that you have, or maybe models that you've researched, or potential opportunities to ensure retention and hopefully graduation?
It's a significant issue. I'm not sure, but I think it's a growing issue perhaps. I think that's good, that single parents, if that's the situation, are coming back to school. I'm sure there's more that want to, but find barriers of childcare, limiting the reality of that happening. And I think that that's something that we ought to look at. I know a lot of the businesses that I've worked with in the community, their business bringing in people as employees, they need to help with childcare. I think we need to look at that. I don't know how it happens, but that's, we've got good people that can help figure that out. But from my own perspective and my own view, I would say that that's something that we ought to look at and do, we ought to stretch ourselves to do that if that's a limitation, once again, to our students being here. If it's transportation, if it's childcare, whatever it is, that's something we ought to do, because nobody can maybe greater benefit from the college than a single parent trying to get by, supporting a child, trying to get here, trying to work, needing to better themselves to get a better job in order to take better care of their family. We ought to look at how we can help with that.
Thank you for the question, Mindy. When I think about, in the past, when I thought about education, I thought about, you know, kindergarten, and I thought about elementary school, and I thought about middle school, and I thought about high school, then college. I've actually done some work with the community college, and I'm now, I'm thinking about this as like P-14, right? And so I think as a college, we need to think about not only those students that are here, but what's coming down the pike, right? And so what can we do to make sure that the third grade reading levels and GRPS are sufficient? I think that at times, when we try to tackle these problems as individual institutions, we won't have as much success if we were to collectively look at this. So if the community college is working with Grand Rapids Public Schools, and if the public schools are working with local businesses, and if the businesses are working with the source, and if the source is working with DHS, we can resolve this problem. And that goes to the generational issue. And when you provide support for not only that parent, or not only that child, if you think about them in as a system, hopefully we can have greater outcomes in the future.
Kenyatta took the words out of my mouth when I was going to say everything is kind of connected to everything else, and it's a challenge and an opportunity. It's not a challenge, it's an opportunity for us. In my earlier comments, I used the word nimbleness, and I think your question speaks to that nimbleness. It's really a similar, it's a similar opportunity we would have for workforce development. And it really speaks to the gentleman's question about location. I think we need to be creative about location, we need to be creative about the time we deliver our service, where we deliver our service. What agencies in town are we connected with? Can the college take leadership in that? We are. We are probably the key asset in this community when it connects to human support. So as a college, we have the privilege of taking some leadership there. So we can be the ones that bring these agencies to the table and recognize the fact that that is not only real, but that's a wonderful opportunity. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to think about, how can we begin to build a brand for a two-year-old child whose mom or dad is going to community college, where that two-year-old child is in some way connected to a program that's connected to community
Do we have any more questions from the audience? Well, maybe I'll take this opportunity for one last question, even though I'm the moderator, I will come at it from the perspective of a faculty person. Could you speak to us, and I would like to hear from every one of the candidates, to the role of the arts at the community college and at Grand Rapids as a community?
I think they're critically important because they're a part of life. They're a part of our community. And I think from our educational perspective here at the college, we ought to be making sure that people learn to appreciate them and learn what's happening. I always used to tell the story, come to college so that you can earn enough money to take advantage of all of the opportunities in this community, in the arts, in the theater. I mean, we have wonderful things available. So I mean, we play a two-role part, because one is tickets to the opera, and they're cheap. If you don't have a decent job, you can't go. So I mean, I think we need to look at it. And I always used to talk about that. They say, well, is it one versus the other? No, it's looking at it together. But I think that everybody that comes through the college, I think it's a part of our responsibility to both expose people to that and to help them to learn to appreciate it and learn how to take advantage of it, and to see the way that it can enrich their life in this
I was really happy to see that. I think our music department was just accredited for a two-year certificate, is that correct? Very recently?
I think it was for longer than that, but yes, they did receive their accreditation.
And that's fantastic. I'm speaking as a former player of the trumpet, the French horn, and the piano. It used to be that we thought that there was the field of the mind, and then the field of the soul and the spirit, but now we know that music is so important that they're interconnected. And music not only feeds your soul, it makes you smarter, for lack of a better, more elegant way of saying it. The arts shouldn't go away, and I'm really proud that we have a strong arts component. Maybe it could be even bigger at some point here at the college. I think it's essential.
I'll just make a quick comment on the arts. I've got two degrees in political science and psychology from a liberal arts institution, so I've always been a fan of the arts. As a young man, I probably didn't appreciate it. I've always wanted to be a lawyer, and I said, you know what? Take legal classes, you're going to be a lawyer, you might take some business class that helps you run your business. But after going to Wabash and taking Greek history and reading, you know, Shakespeare and the Iliad, and it created, I think it made me a better attorney. It made me a better lawyer, because I think I understood the world a little better. I was able to, hopefully, you know, in college, you have these deep conversations about things that you've learned, and I think the arts is a way to do that. And I think that overall, it gives you, it makes you a better, well-rounded person. I think that's the main purpose of the arts, is making you well-rounded, and giving you an appreciation for your history, and allows, hopefully eventually allows you to be a better whatever you're trying to be.
I would agree with Kenyatta about the influence of arts. When I went to Wayne State University, when I transferred from here, one of the first classes I took down there was an introduction to humanities. And we spent almost the entire semester at the Detroit Institute of Art wandering around in there, and it was, it totally overwhelmed me. I couldn't believe it. I had never seen anything like that before. And it really did open my mind, and I think it's a key thing to do. If we can do that for the students here, open their mind. I think, for example, Art Prize is fantastic, right across the street, Fountain Street Church. During Art Prize, you walk over, they've got all these exhibits in there, and you walk down the street, and they're all over the place. I think arts are very, very important, and we should try to push it as hard as we can on the new students coming in here, to get them into humanities class, expose them to... I took a humanities class here, and we did Japanese poetry, and I had to dress up in a kimono, and you know, we did, you know, we did the Greek gods and all this, and it was fantastic. And a lot of the young students first were kind of turned off by it, but once they got into it, they really got into it. And so I agree with Kenyatta 100%. It's a mind-altering experience.
What department are you in, by the way?
I'm in the visual arts.
Visual arts, okay, all right. I'm reminded of years ago, being interviewed for a job and having somebody ask me the question about how important the arts were, and so I gave this flamboyant, wonderful response to how important they were, and how one can't live without the appreciation for music and art and that sort of thing. And then found myself, less than a year later, reducing the number of ensembles we had in the program by one, and having that person come back to me and say, hey, what's the context of this? Oh, I just heard you say that this is really important, and now, you know, we added one more lab to the bug department, and you're cutting out one ensemble in the music department. Having said that, having said that, what, the beauty of this place, the beauty of this place is by definition, we're a marriage between the liberal arts and workforce development. That's who we are. That's in our DNA. And so we program for that. You don't come here without having the opportunity to touch the aesthetic. That's kind of the, that's the who we are. How much aesthetic you get to touch, that's always one of these prickly questions that you deal with when you deal with a massive budget and all of that stuff. But are arts important? Absolutely, they're incredibly important. They're part of who we are. They're part of who we are.
Thank you very much to all of you and your thoughtful answers. Do we have any more questions? Since I don't see any more, I will make the closing remarks. Thank you very much for coming this afternoon. Let's give a hand to our candidates. And I must say that we had a wonderful discussion, because all of us participated, our audience was great. Let's give a hand to everybody. And I want to wish our candidates the best of luck during the election. Please do not forget to go out there and vote. Thank you very much once again, and have a good afternoon.
Hey, guys. It was fun. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was all right.
Good to meet you, buddy.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.